Back in the session, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, the October 31st Halloween version of the Board of Supervisors meeting. And I want to note that we had quite a lengthy morning and hopefully the afternoon will not be as lengthy. And I'll ask Flo to call the role, please, to establish your quorum and then we'll go into some of our presentations. We have some special visitors with us today, so.
Good afternoon. Supervisors Frost, here, Kennedy.
Here.
Peters, here.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, let's go with our, call our first item if we could.
Item 35 is the Presentation to Board Members and Law Enforcement Regarding the Deputy Danny Oliver Freeway Dedication.
Okay. And we do have some very special guests with us. We have Susan Oliver and her daughter here, and then we also have our captain and police chief from City Ranch Cordova, Mr. Pittman, Chris Pittman, and Chief Deputy Freworth. And Susan's going to come forward and make some special presentations, and certainly we want to acknowledge her and certainly her family for their service to our community. And again, it's been several years now, but this community certainly celebrates Danny's services to his community, and I know you've got a very special presentation, so Susan, welcome.
Thank you so much. We wanted to thank you. I know that you guys played a vital role in helping us get this sign, and it meant a whole lot to us to be able to get it and be able to memorialize him on the freeway. We always tell jokes about his love for cars. I don't think he had a bigger hobby than cars, so being able to have him on the freeway really does kind of help us memorialize something that he loved. He loved to drive. He loved the chase. I always joked about him being kind of like the canine dog in the car. As soon as he heard sirens and soft house cars, he practically was howling in the car, and it's like, okay, they're not working. But, so his love for cars and being on the road was very important. So we, the sign, we wanted to make replicas, but we decided you didn't need a 12 by 4 sign in your office, right?
Thank you.
So we have made one for the Board of Supervisors, so that you guys can have one up in a common area in your facility.
Okay.
And then we've also made one for the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Jones was, helped us administrate the paperwork for getting that finalized, and so that was excellent. And then we also wanted to thank the Rancher Cordova Division. They were excellent at helping us put the dedication ceremony on for Dan's sign, which was lovely. We had a private ceremony where Supervisor Natoli came out to speak, and we really, really appreciate that. It was probably about 50 to 60 family members and friends, and we were able to all take photos with it. And then the following day, we were able to house it at the Rancher Cordova location, where people were able to come throughout the day and see it. And I believe there was also vest fitting during that time, so a lot of deputies were able to, deputies and police officers and Rancher Cordova were able to come by during that time and have fellowship as well. So these were just the items that we wanted to dedicate to you guys and thank you. And these are provided through the Danny Oliver Foundation, where we are continuing to do a lot of work to help in communities. This next year, we hope to put on a couple of programs. This year, we were able to give away $9,000 in scholarships to students at McClatchy High School, as well as at the Sheriff's Academy for students in an unpaid academy. So we're really proud about being able to do that, and we'll continue to do that. So this is just our way of thanking you, and again, thanks so much to everyone.
Well, thank you so much, Susan. And I would just note too, that if someone wanted to get ahold of Susan, if somebody wanted to get ahold of the foundation, what's the best way to get in contact? Is there a website?
Sure. Yeah, there's a website that is DannyOliverFoundation.org. And then there's also our Facebook page, which is The Danny Oliver Foundation.
Great.
So if you put Danny Oliver Foundation in any search engine or Facebook search, you should be able to easily find it.
And remind us of where the sign is, up on Highway 50?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will be, it will be both on east and westbound, and it will be just prior to the Cameron Park exits, which is, it really is close to Cambridge, but the exit, you go right past the Cambridge exit, and then it is there. And that was vital for us, and I know that you guys were really helpful in getting that done for us, because it's where our family lives. And my husband and I have lived in Eldorado County, no offense to SAC County, but we've lived there for about 12 years now, so it was kind of, I know it's not in the county, but it was certainly essential where we would see it on a daily basis, so I really appreciate that.
You bet. Well, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
And Chief, would you like to say anything?
Yes, absolutely. On behalf of the sheriff, I would just like to say thank you, and to Susan and your family, thank you for the presentation today. It means a great deal to us. Thank you very much.
Very much. Good. Chief Pittman, would you like to say anything?
Just, again, thank you. Echo what Chief Freworth said. This means a whole lot to us, and being able to help you any way we can, we're really part of our family, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great. And thank you so much, Susan, again, certainly to my colleagues, and all of us, obviously in different ways, certainly been supportive, but thoughts and prayers and, you know, efforts along the way, and appreciate his service, and certainly a great way to memorialize his love for cars, his love for his community, and obviously his love for his family, so. Supervisor Serna, you got your.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Is there any way that I could just do a quick photo?
Oh, sure, yeah. I'll come down, yeah, you betcha. Yeah, we'll come down, we'll take comments, I'll come down and take a photo, so stay right there.
Okay.
So, I appreciate this very much, and I don't think we did much of a heavy lift here. I know it was a team effort to get this accomplished, but this is something that means a great deal to all of us. Some of us, this was the first time we lost a peace officer since we've been fortunate enough to serve on this board, so that was, that was a very trying period for all of us, and I think this is very appropriate. I have a question, though. My understanding that Danny was not just into cars, but I think he had a green thumb, too, didn't he?
A green thumb?
Yeah, wasn't he? I thought I saw some photos of him working in the garden or whatnot.
No, you know, no, Dan didn't know the difference between a pine tree. I'm sure if you saw him working in the garden, it's because I put him there. Because I would always, I would put him there, so I'm sure you saw him in the garden. That doesn't mean he knew a darn thing.
He was actually working in the garden, okay.
Yeah, I'd say, "We're planting azaleas today," and he'd go reaching for a tree. And I'd say, "No, no, not a tree."
All right, all right. I was going to make the suggestion that, you know, we have a number of different projects that come across our desks all the time in our respective districts, and this is not to be the last opportunity we perhaps consider for, I think appropriately, considering the memorialization of someone that, you know, gave his life for this community, and so I was going to suggest, but maybe it's not very apropos now, that some of those projects that come across our desks are things like community gardens, but if he was more in the business of perhaps mistaking flowers for trees, and maybe that's not the most appropriate way to do it, but I think we should all keep our eyes peeled and keep that as an open consideration moving forward.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, and I know, for you, it might not seem like a big, you know, a large deal, but this was, this was really important, and we were glad to get this accomplished, so thank you.
Susan Peters.
Sure. I just want to say, we'll look forward to seeing you on December 2nd. We are dedicating a park in the Mission Oaks Park District to Danny.
Yes, and we are so excited about that.
So am I. It's taken a lot longer than I thought to get finished.
And it's, and it's okay that it's taking longer, because for us, we lived in our grief for a long time, so we didn't do well at having, we didn't, initially, we had so many people wanting to do wonderful things, and it was great, and I found myself, just in the last year, actually going to some of the sites where people did dedications, because the first two years, we just couldn't. We were just too emotionally in our grief, so the fact that it's happening now is like, it's a real joyful, it's, so we're pleased that it's now, we really are. And it looks lovely. It really does.
It's looking really nice.
I know that he loved, he loved working with you and your staff very much.
Yeah, we did, too. He was a great guy.
Well, we'll.
And if the weather holds, just cross your fingers, everything will be done by December 7th.
Yes, we'll come rain or shine.
Okay, that's a deal.
Well, I guess I want to invite the board to join for a picture, then let you all come.
That would be excellent.
If you've got a park and other things that works, that's great.
Do you want to grab my phone? I got my first. She looks so happy. I know. I pulled her out. Pulled her out all the fun today.
It's just those days. Look, we're back here.
Yeah, that would be great. And then if someone could take a picture for me.
William, thank you very much.
Good point.
Could you like to? No, I think everyone together, that would be great. Yeah, so I'll just kind of, I'll just kind of all switch up in here. I know. There we go.
On three. One, two, three. Okay, I'm going to take this one. Three, one, two, three. There it is. Here.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thanks again, thank you for everything. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks for working with us. Well, you know, what I did for a living, I did a lot of having to work in communities, so you might have seen him working with me, that didn't mean he liked it.
I just found this big rim strong.
Oh, yeah, no, we were in Hawaii.
That's not hurting.
No, that's okay.
Okay, well, thank you once again, and look forward to that park dedication, December 2nd, was that what you said?
Yeah, it's, knock on wood.
Okay.
You'll get an invitation when it's finalized.
Okay. All right, very good. With that, before we get into our other order of agenda, we do have some very special visitors with us today, and I know Supervisor Frost had a chance to visit with some of you, and you're all down here in the board chambers, and so we wanted to give a little special recognition, so I'm going to call on Supervisor Frost to introduce our group, and I think you have a brief presentation, you may want to call him to the podium, and...
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I just wanted to introduce some of my friends from Sacramento Association of Realtors, and this is the Leadership Group, Leadership 2017. These are our future council members and business owners and business professionals. And so I wanted to invite Kalen Wright, who is the Government Affairs Director at Sacramento Association of Realtors, and all of you to come down, and I have a little present for you, a county pin, and maybe introduce yourselves and tell a little bit about the leadership class.
Good afternoon, Kalen.
Good afternoon. Thank you Supervisor Frost. This is the 2017 SAR Leadership Academy. This has been going a number of years now at SAR. It's a yearly academy we do, and I work with the leaders every year, taking them to the state capitol, a city council meeting, and a county board of supervisors meeting, just to help them understand our work with our local jurisdictions. So thank you all for having us today.
Good, that's great.
Want to each introduce yourselves, or?
Question.
Maurice.
You can put a shameless plug in for whoever your affiliate is.
Hard money, Chris, I work for these guys and for you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Maurice Thomas, and I'm the chair, and I was happy to be a part of this class. It was a special class. They put together a very special project to help, help encourage committee involvement within the association, and that's something that hasn't been done before, and I'm glad to be part of it.
Great, thanks, Maurice.
Hi, everyone. Kiara Norman, I'm serving as vice chair with Maurice Thomas this year. Happy to be here, thanks.
Thanks, Kiara.
Hi, I'm Samantha Toto of Weisensee. Thank you for everything you've done. What Sue shared with us, what you guys have done, it's amazing. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Samantha.
Hello. Jordan Pruitt with Wykurt Realtors. Really has been a pleasure to really learn about how everything works on the government level and all the different moving pieces that go into it, so thank you.
Great, thanks, George.
Hello, I'm Kenneth Wilburn. I'm the Director of Membership for Veterans Association of Real Estate Professionals, and I'm also a loan officer with Vitae Morris Group. Thank you for having us.
Great, thanks, Ken.
Good afternoon. Mari Garcia with First American Title, and I, it's my first time on the board, and I serve on YPN and NAREP, which is an affiliate from SAR as well, so thank you for having us.
Great, thanks, Mari.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Marquez. I'm with Keller Williams Commercial Real Estate Division, and it's been a great opportunity to be part of the Leadership Academy.
Great, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Luis Esponosa with Lion Real Estate. It's been a tremendous experience to be part of this Leadership Academy, and very nice to meet the supervisors today. Thank you.
Great, thank you for being with us. Good, well, we welcome you all down here. You're welcome to come back any Tuesday or Wednesday, we're in session, and...
Yay, we love one.
We're all about pictures.
Thank you.
I wish I'd have brought my camera. Can you?
So, do you want us to go in the light, or would that be better?
All right, Kenneth's got his on his lapel already.
I'm going to move the mics, honey. Did you move the mic?
Hey, smile.
Great, thank you all for joining us. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay this afternoon, and hope to see you back here again. Thank you Supervisor Frost. Okay, Ms. Flo.
So, do you guys want to take your nominations, because we have to wait until 2:30?
You can do that.
So that would be item number 41. You also have some, sorry, it wasn't prepared. You do have some appointments from your own ranks, and we can start with those as well, if you'd like.
So 16, we do a couple of 16 with the 2:30 items, is that what we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going with that item.
Okay. So you're on appointments?
Yes, please. So do you want to start with item 37, which is the, excuse me, not 37, 38, Appointments From Your Own Ranks? You have several of those, and then we can go into your nominations. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So item 38 is the Appointments From Your Own Ranks to the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, Board of Directors in the Urban Counties Caucus.
All right, I believe Supervisor Peters is the member, and Supervisor Serna's the alternate. Are you okay with that?
We spoke earlier, and I think I'd like to keep it the same.
All right.
That's, well, the board, of course. Also, just that I'd share with the rest of the board members I shared with Susan, I'm going to be running for second vice president at CSAC this year.
All righty. You're going to get into that lineup, huh? I think Muriel and Sandy, Sandy Smalley, Muriel Johnson, both serve as former presidents of CSAC. Okay. All right, then, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Chair, would you move?
Second.
Okay, move the second to approve the appointments to CSAC. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 39, Appointments From Your Own Ranks to the National Association of Counties.
I think this is written up incorrectly. Phil Serna is the member, and I'm the alternate. We switched that last year.
Yeah.
We'll note that correction. So the recommendation is for Supervisor Serna as the member, and then Supervisor Peters as the alternate.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and do...
Okay, Phil, did you have a comment on this before?
No.
Okay.
I was going to point out the same thing.
Okay, got that, okay. Chair, would you move? Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 40, it's the Appointments From Your Own Ranks to the Regional Water Authority.
Okay. Susan would be the member, and Carrie Schmitz would be the alternate appointed member. Okay with that?
Yeah, unless someone else would like to do it.
Oh, no, no. Okay, I'd move the recommendation, Regional Water Authority. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
Okay, now we're ready for your nomination, which is item 41. You are continuing to November 7th, the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to November 14th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, and the Sacramento Environmental Commission. And for your matters today, we have Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I happen to have the list in front of me, so...
My notes show that you are nominating all of the candidates, April Carney, Marshall Wilkerson, Pallvinder, Dylan, Jacob Wolf, and Joseph Samora, and continuing the remaining to December 5th.
Okay. The chiefs have, I know, interviewed with all those folks, so, all right.
Okay. For Children's Coalition, my notes show that you're nominating Zima Creason, and then continuing the remaining to December 5th.
Okay.
Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board. I have notes that you're nominating Christina Newport, Sacto County Office of Education, and then you are continuing the remaining to December 5th. And then finally, the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, have a note here that you're continuing that to December 5th.
Yes.
You have pending interviews.
All right.
And that concludes your nomination.
on the board, and I serve on YPN and NAREP, which is an affiliate from SAR as well, so thank you for having us.
Great, thanks, Mari.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Marquez. I'm with Keller Williams Commercial Real Estate Division, and it's been a great opportunity to be part of the Leadership Academy.
Great, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Luis Espinoza with Lion Real Estate. It's been a tremendous experience to be part of this Leadership Academy, and very nice to meet the supervisors today. Thank you.
Great, thank you for being with us. Good, well, we welcome you all down here. You're welcome to come back any Tuesday or Wednesday we're in session, and.
Yay, we love one.
We're all about pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I'd have dropped my camera. Can you? So, do you want us to go in the light, or would that be better?
All right, Ken has got his on his lapel already.
I have this there.
You move the mics, honey. Did you move the mic?
Great, thank you all for joining us, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you so much, you're welcome to stay this afternoon, and hope to see you back here again. Thank you Supervisor Frost. Okay, Ms. Flo.
So, do you guys want to take your nominations, because we have to wait until 2:30, and you can do that. So that would be item number 41. You also have some, sorry, I wasn't prepared. We do have some appointments from your own ranks, and we can start with those as well, if you'd like.
So 16, we do a couple 16 with the 2:30 item, is that what we did?
Yeah, that's going with that item.
Okay, so you're on appointments?
Yes, please. So do you want to start with item 37, which is the, excuse me, not 37, 38, appointments from your own ranks? You have several of those, and then we can go into your nominations. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So item 38 is the appointments from your own ranks to the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, Board of Directors in the Urban Counties Caucus.
All right, I believe Supervisor Peters is the member, and Supervisor Serna's the alternate. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, we spoke earlier, and I think we'd like to keep it the same.
All right.
That's, well, the board, of course. Also, just that I'd share with the rest of the board members I shared with Susan, I'm going to be running for second vice president at CSAC this year.
All righty. You're going to get into that lineup, huh? I think Muriel and Sandy, Sandy Smalley, Muriel Johnson, both serve as former presidents of CSAC. Okay, all right, then, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Chair, would you move?
Second.
Okay, move the second to approve the appointments to CSAC.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 39, appointments from your own ranks to the National Association of Counties. I think this is written up incorrectly. Phil Serna is the member, and I'm the alternate. We switched that last year.
Yeah.
We'll note that correction. So the recommendation is for Supervisor Serna as the member, and then Supervisor Peters as the alternate.
Correct.
Okay, and do.
Okay, Phil, did you have a comment on this before?
No, I was just going to point out.
Okay, you got that, okay. Chair, would you move? Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 40, it's the appointments from your own ranks to the Regional Water Authority.
Okay. Susan would be the member, and Carrie Schmitz would be the alternate appointed member. Okay with that?
Yeah, unless someone else would like to do it.
Oh, no, no. Okay, I'd move the recommendation, Regional Water Authority. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
Okay, now we're ready for your nomination, which is item 41. You are continuing to November 7th, the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to November 14th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B Slough House Wilton Consumnis, County Service Area 4C Delta, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Cemetery District Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, and the Sacramento Environmental Commission. And for your matters today, we have Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I happen to have the list in front of me, so.
My notes show that you are nominating all of the candidates, April Carney, Marshall Wilkerson, Pelvinder, Dylan, Jacob Wolf, and Joseph Samora, and continuing the remaining to December 5th.
Okay, the chiefs have, I know, interviewed with all those folks, so, all right.
Okay. For Children's Coalition, my notes show that you're nominating Zima Kreason, and then continuing the remaining to December 5th.
Okay.
Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board. I have notes that you're nominating Christina Newport, Sacto County Office of Education, and then you are continuing the remaining to December 5th. And then finally, the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board have a note here that you're continuing that to December 5th.
Yes.
You have pending interviews.
All right.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, well, we've got about four minutes here before we, next item, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll just, we'll take a very brief recess, be back in session 2:30.